Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started here in just a second with the Pledge of Allegiance. We would have Banda Brothers 12034 Joseph Maguianes, please, would lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. He's also with Commander Ramirez of the Banda Brothers 12034. I want a round of applause for these gentlemen, and thank you for your service.
All right. We'll relaunch this. Thank you. I want to announce that Councilmember Casha Falguita is on with us via Zoom. He is doing his duty through the reserve. Councilmember Casha Falguita, are you there?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to continue to participate in our great City Council meetings. Appreciate you guys, and God bless.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tim Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here. Can you guys hear that out there? I know. That was a -- I'm sorry, we're going through a tin can with a string. I apologize. We're working on that. We are -- Mr. Domer's working on that.
He's across the Pacific.
He is across the Pacific, so, yeah, that's probably why, too. We have presentations tonight. Mr. Domer, is that correct? We have a general plan reconnect and relaunch presentation by De novo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me tonight. I am hopefully a familiar face to you at this point, but for those of you that haven't met me, my name's Amanda Tropiano, and I'm a principal with De novo Planning Group, and we are leading the team of consultants that are assisting the city of Laverne with updating your general plan. So this process has been ongoing for a number of years. You saw me most recently in the winter of last year to talk specifically about your housing element, but tonight we're going to talk about the entire general plan, the project that's been ongoing since late 2017, and we're really excited to relaunch that effort and share with you the work that has been done up until now and where we're headed after tonight. So, next slide. So I'm going to go through just an overview of some information that you may have heard before, but bear with me as I just get everyone up to speed. We're going to talk a little bit about our project team, kind of what is a general plan and why Laverne is updating it, some special focus on our engagement with the community and opportunities for public input, speaking specifically about the work completed by your general plan advisory committee or your GPAC, and then some of the work that's been completed to date and our next steps. So as I had mentioned, you hired a group of consultants led by myself and our team at De novo Planning Group. We specialize in this type of planning work for cities and counties in California. This is what we do. This is our bread and butter. We work with a team of specialist consultants that help us address unique topics. So we're working with a transportation engineering team to talk about mobility and how people get around your community. We have an economic and market research team that studies market trends both in your community and in the region and makes recommendations for supporting a strong local economy. And we also have technical experts in noise, cultural resources, and infrastructure assisting us with the team as well. So a general plan is a document that every city and county in California has to have that talks about how decisions are made for growth and development in the local community. So it's really a blueprint for how decisions are made over the next 20 years. It's long term, and it's reflective of each individual community's goals and priorities. So each city's general plan is very much customized to your local conditions and cover your local issues. Your current general plan was adopted in the mid-'90s, so it's time. It's time for us to rethink some of those components. And you may be also familiar with your zoning code or your specific plans. Those are implementing documents of your general plan. So if you think about, you know, kind of all your planning documents in the shape of a pyramid, your general plan's at the very top of that pyramid, and everything else kind of needs to fall in line with that. So your general plan sets that overall general framework. So as I had mentioned, since the mid-, late-'90s, when your general plan was last updated, a lot has changed. If you were to crack open that 1998 general plan, you would see that it talks a lot about the forthcoming extension of the 210 freeway, like it's coming soon, you know, and what are we going to do to prepare for it? So you've got to kind of think about how to reposition yourself and things like that. And then, of course, now, you know, there are also new transportation opportunities with the new metro line station that's coming in and kind of something else that's contemporary that would be discussed at this point that would really change the way that Laverne might be thinking about what its future looks like. Since the last 25 years, there's also been a host of new legislative requirements that we've got to cover in a general plan. I'm going to generalize those and say a lot of those requirements talk about mobility, so how people get around a community, planning and preparing for climate change and resiliency planning, planning to address the needs of all members of your community through the lens of environmental justice. And then overall, our direction from the council from the beginning has always been to use this as an opportunity to connect with your community, to uncover what is wonderful about Laverne, what should be preserved and protected in areas that can be addressed in that 20-year time period. So as I had mentioned, this process really started in late 2017. We worked through a series of opportunities with your public visioning workshops and surveys. I'll go through those in a few slides, to understand community priorities as they relate to the topic areas of a general plan, land use, open space, conservation, noise, safety, and so on. In 2018, we really worked on evaluating and establishing existing conditions related to those topic areas, understanding issues and opportunities facing the city, and then going through a process of evaluating your land use map. So that's the map with colors on it that talk about what types of projects can go where. And then that brings us to 2019, when, as we all know, the city was faced with a unique responsibility to plan to accommodate its regional housing needs. It was assigned its RENA from the state and through Southern California Association of Governments, which dictated how many new units the city needed to plan to accommodate over the next eight years. And it was a fundamental shift in the way that we'd been thinking. You know, the city's RENA prior to that had always been very modest, but of course, your RENA for this coming planning period was more than we were expecting. So we put just kind of the brakes on the overall general plan as we worked on addressing the legislative requirements of the housing element. So that really kind of took the driver's seat from 2019 to 2022, when you saw me at the end of last year. But with certification of your housing element, we are ready to reengage the entire general plan process. So that brings us to what we're working on now, which is really drafting the meat of your general plan, the elements that go into making up your general plan, proceeding with the environmental review associated with that, and then, of course, eventually bringing it back before the Planning Commission and the City Council for a series of public hearings. So I wanted to spend some time talking about the public engagement that was completed kind of pre-housing element and then continued opportunities as we move forward. So there is a dedicated project website at laverne.generalplan.org that continues to be the best source for contemporary information, access to draft documents, and members of the public can provide comment all right on that page. The city also has taken the process of posting digital engagements on platforms like Nextdoor and direct emails to individuals that have signed up for notifications. We hosted a series of three visioning workshops in late 2017, early 2018, that talked about establishing a vision and values, understanding land use priorities and mobility objectives. We've also hosted a number of pop-up events at community activities. There's been an online vision and values survey. You received almost 1,000 responses to that, which was wonderful. Summary of that's on the website. We've also facilitated 10 general plan advisory committee meetings. That committee was composed of individuals representing a diverse range of interest groups in the city, persons interested in active transportation, representing the University of Laverne, representing mobile home communities, seniors, and youth. We've also conducted briefings throughout the community, such as with the Chamber. We're featured prominently in the City Manager's newsletter periodically, including in the February issue, and then, of course, my briefings here with you as well. So moving forward, that website again has a platform for contact us. Anyone at any time can send in information on any topic related to the general plans. That's a great opportunity. We'll continue to provide information for that regular City Manager's newsletter. We'll continue to make the post as we relaunch draft documents for public review on those digital platforms. As we move into the environmental review, we'll be hosting a meeting to talk about the environmental topics, and then fast-forwarding to when we actually have a draft general plan ready. That will be circulated for public review. We envision hosting online and in-person workshops to review that information and allow the public to provide comment. And then, of course, at our public hearings, the public is welcome to come in and provide comment in those avenues as well. So in terms of the GPAC, I will start this by saying your general plan advisory committee's responsibility is largely complete. They finished their scope of work, and they produced a draft policy document back in 2019 that is largely ready to go, and we'll talk about some minor modifications that's needed. But just as a reminder, that group was extremely dedicated and diligent in supporting us through that process. Again, at that, as part of those 10 meetings, we talked about all of the important topic areas. And then the last two meetings, the GPAC actually reviewed and commented and ultimately recommended that the draft policy document prepared at that time move forward. So they had their thumbprints all over that work and have seen the documents, reviewed them, and moved them forward through the process. All of the meeting materials are also available on the website. We also prepared a community vision that was brought forward to council for your consideration. I read through that again as I was getting excited about tonight's presentation. This still holds true. These are, again, long-term aspirational goals of the community that resonate and kind of stand the test of time. So things that were relevant a few years ago continue to be relevant today. This is talking about creating a thriving place to live, work, learn, and enjoy life, supporting Laverne's small-town charm, creating vibrant destinations, especially in the Old Town area, recognizing your family-friendly atmosphere, the quality and contributions of your youth and your seniors, and so on. So that is also available, and we'll make sure that you're provided a copy of that as we move forward with those draft documents as well. So the policy document itself, that's your general plan, it's composed of a series of chapters or topics or elements, all meaning the same thing. Some of those are required by the state as part of your responsibility to have a general plan, but some of them can be customized. So the required topics we've got to cover: land use, mobility or transportation, resources, open space, conservation, noise, public safety, and environmental justice. We also have a dedicated element here in Laverne talking specifically about economic development, community design, fiscal sustainability, and community health and wellness. So you can see from that list, we specifically had previously omitted the housing element, but that's been adopted and approved under separate cover, and these documents will be brought forward for a series of public hearings as well. Now with that said, kind of in 2019, we did largely complete the public review draft of all of these chapters, but fast-forward three more years, and there are new pieces of legislation we have to talk about. So we've got to go back and make some minor tweaks just to make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is on those requirements. Those are really related to climate change, resiliency planning, fire protection, and emergency evacuation. So those are things that a lot of cities right now are going back and just completing kind of a focused update on, but obviously, since you're going through a comprehensive update, we get to tackle that all at the same time. So just reiterating, those land use planning objectives is kind of where we left off in 2019, which was looking at your land use plan and understanding that the overarching goal was to maintain the special character of Laverne by preserving and protecting your existing single-family residential neighborhoods and your open space resources, and accommodating any future growth first, largely around the metro station, around your Old Town Laverne specific plan area that already planned to accommodate growth and development and was approved a dozen years ago, and then along your corridors, including Foothill and Arrow. We simplified the way that specific plans previously were categorized on your land use map. Laverne has a lot of them, so to give each of them a number and a color was getting a little cumbersome, so we just generalized that, made single specific plan designations. And then we've also introduced a new very high-density residential designation that allows for development up to 32 dwelling units an acre. This is my word to the wise, and I felt it, you know, five years ago as well. This is preparing you for what will be your next housing element cycle, so that you are in a position of success at that point. But I will point out that no parcels in the city are using this designation or have been designated with this designation at this time. It's a resource. It's a tool in your toolbox, so that if you need it, it exists. If you don't need it, it just sits there. But it's available for you if you need it, and again, this is a proactive driver-seat step for the city to be prepared for your next housing element cycle. This is not intended for you to read, but we have been --
[inaudible]
Yeah, I can't read it. So the point is to illustrate that we took a very surgical approach to your land use designations. The city's land use element, although a tiny bit old, was in really good condition. So when we made those modifications, this wasn't throwing everything out and starting fresh. It was finding ways to just make those minor modifications to the existing land use designations in the map, to just hone in on some of those issues I talked about, make it easier to administer, make it more reflective of those long-term decisions, and make sure you've got the tools available to adapt to changing market conditions in the coming 20 years. And again, not that you can see all the individual parcels here, but you can see what we're calling the benchmark plan, which is essentially the colors on the map. You'll see a lot of them are kind of in that tan, stripey designations. These are available on the website, so you can download them and look at them. But again, simplifying all those specific plans for you. You can see those highlighted on the map on the right. You know, almost half of Laverne is addressed and covered through specific plans, almost all of them fully built out. These are not areas of change or redevelopment. These are going to be areas that are going to be maintained in their current condition for some time. So we are responsible for quantifying and considering the impact of future growth. This is largely consistent with your responsibilities under your housing element, so I'm not going to belabor this, but cities grow. All cities grow. So in keeping with the spirit of the community objectives and vision, understanding, Laverne wants to maintain a lot of its character and charm and allow growth to occur in those areas designated for development, such as within your Old Town Laverne specific plan. Our projections accommodate approximately a 10% growth over the next 20 years. This is a very modest, realistic assessment of how growth could be accommodated, and again, the increase in units and increase in potential population are almost exactly consistent with your responsibilities under your housing element anyways. So all of these things work together and support the same approach. So that brings us to where we're headed next. We basically got through the policy document. We've got a land use map. We're ready to start our environmental review. That includes basically understanding the potential impacts associated with implementing your general plan. So in order to understand those impacts, we also have to conduct a series of technical studies that includes looking at potential transportation impacts and reducing vehicle miles traveled, potential impacts related to noise, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and energy. We package all of that up in a draft environmental impact report, or EIR, which you're probably familiar with, and that circulated for a 45-day public review period, both for members of your community, other agencies, and interested parties. And then that document, along with your policy document, are brought forward to the Planning Commission first, and then, should they recommend it, onward to the City Council. During that process, we'll host, like I had mentioned, in-person and online open houses to solicit input, and that will be shared with you as part of that public hearing That's the end of my presentation. Thank you again for having me tonight, and look forward to moving on with this next portion of the work.
Sorry, we're having a little mic trouble.
No worries.
Thank you, President Tropiano. I think what we might do is open it up to the public and then bring it back up to the dais, and then if we have some questions, we'll bring it back up if you don't want to.
Sounds great.
Great. I'm going to open up public comment right now. Any public comment on this presentation? Don't all jump out of your seat at once.
A great idea. A little bit of change.
What's that?
A great idea, a little bit of change.
Thank you. Well, with that, we're going to -- anybody online for public comment? Let's close public comment, bring it up to the dais. Mr. Johnson, you had some questions?
My questions were more along the lines with what we're talking about in the consent calendar, because we're looking at another $15,000 to do another traffic study or traffic analysis with De novo, and I'm wondering about the timing on that. We've got two and a half years before the gold line actually opens up, and that's when the traffic patterns are set to change, but yet we want to do it now. It just seems like we're so close to that opening that it may be more relevant if we wait for that opening to do another traffic study. That was my comment. Or my concern.
Do we have any other comments for President Tropiano? Then come on up.
I should have sat closer. I definitely appreciate the comment. We collected traffic counts back in 2018 as part of our existing conditions work, you know, ran the lines out on the roads and collected that existing traffic conditions. We are obligated and responsible under our environmental review to consider impacts related to vehicle miles traveled now. So while we do expect some minor changes in traffic patterns as a result of the opening of the metro station, of course, in order for this project to move forward, we are doing some additional spot counts, so that cost on the minor contract amendment is just to validate, reconfirm, and reassess some of those counts we collected back in 2018 and bring them up to contemporary conditions. We won't be able to proceed with the environmental review and the project as a whole without those new counts.
One of the concerns that I have is there's so much construction going on currently, rerouting traffic, that the timing of those records as to what the traffic flow actually is, I just don't want it skewed in a way that doesn't represent what traffic is going to be.
Absolutely. And so I think we'll take a two-part approach to correcting for that. The first is thankfully, we do have counts from 2018, when the pattern of traffic around the station was operating in a more typical pattern. There wasn't the construction and people being rerouted various directions, so we can kind of calibrate for that. Moving forward, our land plan and patterns in the overall traffic model do account for a pivot in, you know, mode shifts as residents choose to take transit more often. So that will absolutely be recognized in the calibration of that model as we project those future impacts. So we're definitely going to make sure that those changes in the traffic pattern are absolutely reflected in any decisions or recommendations made in that report.
Along Councilmember Johnson's deal with the traffic, I think it's very important to note it, too. We have two residential projects, one on Fruit Street and also one on Amherst, and I think that we're talking about affecting the residents there. Those are going to be more in line with probably 2023, end of 2023, part of 2024, I would imagine. But the big thing is, as Councilmember Johnson said, I understand what you're saying. The gold line's going to bring a very different traffic pattern, but the big thing's going to be, which we really don't know yet, which is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District.
Right.
Which is our Arrow Corridor, which is going, if it goes as planned, could be large, like you're talking about, density, large projects, 200 to 300 homes, our apartments, you know, so, I mean, I think Mr. Domer has a -- he's trying to get his --
Yeah. Yes, on those, I know with the Amherst and the Fruit Street projects, we do have an agreement to do traffic studies once those are done, which is a good thing. And then, as you mentioned, with the specific plan area, those are going to be, any development there is going to have traffic impacts and going to have to do traffic studies. So this is not the only time we're going to be doing the traffic studies. There will be additional traffic studies, but as Amanda talked about, this is going to prepare and better update a baseline so we can see what it was before. So this is all good that we're doing this.
Fair play.
Yeah, and the fair play. So basically, it's going to morph, and it's going to change. Okay. And we're going to address that.
And I know City Manager Domer just said it, but I want to make sure. Councilmember Cash Falguita and I both have asked of two specific places. He's asked up on Esperanza, and I've asked on Emerald and Bodewin, from residents that have come out. And with that answer, City Manager has told me that would be on the second round when they're looking after the housing has finished, but I just want to make sure that was stated. I know Cash has been really pushing for that, and I have been pushing for the Emerald and Bodewin as well, residents coming.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, President Tropiano. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. I'll see you guys as soon.
Thank you. We move on to presentation of Community Design Awards. Little background on this, we've got a bunch of people in the crowd, and I thank you for filling up, and our meeting's only going to last about six hours, so just get comfortable, get some water, go to the bathroom if you have to. We'll take a break. No.
We want to do visits.
Yeah. Oh, I've -- yeah, we want visits, yeah. 2023 City Laverne Community Design Awards. Every two years, the city holds a Community Design Awards. The 2023 Community Design Awards will honor outstanding projects within the city that were completed over the last two years or between 2021 and 2022. The purpose of the Laverne Community Design Awards is to recognize outstanding achievements in project development. Design excellence, cooperation and collaboration, alignment with the general plan. This year's awards were given in the following categories. Am I going too fast? There we go. Public art, residential, institutional, commercial, interior design, and landscaping. The Laverne Community Design Awards give the city a chance to recognize local businesses, institution, and residents who have made outstanding achievements in the design of their establishments. It takes considerable effort to design a project, calling for cooperation between applicants, owners, architects, contractors, and city staff for successful implementation. Nominations were solicited from the City Council Planning Commission and the city staff, and ultimately, the city council awarded those projects that merited recognition for excellence in design and compliance with the general plan, policies to protect and promote Laverne's unique character by encouraging distinctive development through architectural quality and people-oriented design. For this year's awards, projects were selected from the following categories, as I stated: public art, residential, institutional, commercial, interior design, and landscaping. Without further ado, here are this year's award winners. And also, we have in the audience, too, we have the Chairman of the Planning Commission, Jason Simison. He'll be giving the award with me also. Thank you, Jason, and your group for a great job, and we'll come up as soon as we do each The Konaru Residence, located at 1247 Foxford Drive, nominated for residential and landscaping. Kumar Konaru began working with staff on their proposed new residential remodel and expansion at 1247 Roxford Road, which is located within the Mountain Springs Estates back in 2018, and the project was completed in October of 2022. The project consisted of approximately 11,000 square feet of expansion and remodel work, which also featured significant landscape changes to the site. The two-story residence was custom-built to meet the needs of their family and features amenities such as infinity swimming pool, spa, koi fish pond, and vineyard. We'll be over. We have wine, and we can see your house. Nominated for the Residential and Landscaping Award, Kumar and Bindaw Konaru represented as the owners. If you could please come up. If you could please come up. Congratulations.
Who's that landscaping?
Very good. We don't like...
Three, two, one.
Thank you again. Yes. Pam, you want to do that? Next slide, University of Laverne Citrus Roots mural. The Citrus Roots public art piece consists of a mural designed and created by artist Art Mortimer. Since 1971, Mr. Mortimer has worked as a freelance artist, having painted nearly 100 murals. I actually saw him one day. He was out on the backside of the old dorms at U of V on Third Street. Very, very nice gentleman. He was busy working at paint all over himself, so he was doing a great job. The mural consists of an orange grove spread out beneath the Sangre Real Mountains. The mural shows the Laverne L, which was created by college students around 1920, linking the school to the overarching community. The City of Laverne has deep roots in the citrus industry, and placing the mural at the University of Laverne campus has helped to strengthen the university's artistic landscape while acknowledging how the citrus industry has shaped the community of Laverne. The mural is located on the west-facing wall of Monero Hall Building. Nominated for public art, Bianca Romero representing U of V, Art Mortimer representing himself as the artist. Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You want to take this? Hillcrest Homes, Hawthorne Road Homes. I need my glasses. If anybody's ever not been by here, you need to go by the Hawthorne Street and check these out. They're gorgeous. Just gorgeous. Brethren Hillcrest Homes with CEDG Architects first began working on the city and the creation of the homes on Hawthorne Avenue back in the mid-2000s. But due to the 2008 recession, the project was put on hold. The project was originally part of Hillcrest's master plan to develop Neighborhood 6. Hillcrest was originally created in the late 1940s where Laverne Parked with the Church of the Brethren and created a retirement home center for the community. With this project being a phase of an overall plan of a community, in 2019, the city worked with Hillcrest Homes to move the project forward and was finalized in 2021. The project consists of 14 attached-detached senior homes with a common landscaped area. Nominated for the Institutional Award, Mike Townsend representing Brethren Hillcrest Homes, Eric Peterson representing CEDG Architects. Come on up. Shell Rebel Gas Station. I don't know if you guys have noted, on the old town center across from Target, they took that older station and renovated really nicely. And they had... I have never seen a grand opening. They had cake, they had balloons. They said, "Go in the store and take whatever you want." It's like, no, no, we can't do that. But they literally were so generous. Said, "People, go on in the store, take something you want, take a beverage, take candy." And they had food outside. They did a fantastic job, but they did a really, really good job on the gas station. In May of 2021, Anavi Real Estate Development LLC applied to revitalize the Shell gas station at 2510 Foothill Boulevard. The project would consist of a complete exterior and interior remodel to the entirety of the gas station, along with 108-square-foot expansion to the convenience store. As part of the revitalization, the new signage on the site features new Rebel branding. The Rebel brand originally started as a collaboration between Anavi Oil and Paragon Solutions. And the rebranding was developed to refresh half of the existing 400 convenience stores throughout California. Nominated for Commercial Interior Design, Christian Anavi owner, Shatal Shah, representing Anavi Real Estate Development Group LLC. Come on up. Thank you. We'll be over for free foods shortly. Don't worry. Make sure there's lots of pizza. Ah, Tacos Don Cuco. Tacos Don Cuco is a Mexican restaurant with many stores in Texas and only two stores in California. With the Laverne location being their third location, Tacos Don Cuco focuses on serving authentic tacos along with breakfast, seafood, and other specialty dishes using authentic ingredients. Prior to Tacos Don Cuco coming to Laverne, the space was occupied by Sushi Restaurant, which, due to COVID, never opened. In August of 2022, Tacos Don Cuco moved into the space and worked with the city to do interior tenant improvements to better fit the style of the restaurant. Nominated for interior design, Maria Castaneda, representing Tacos Don Cuco, on behalf of the owner, Jonathan Rios. Come on up. Next. Sweet Time by Cafe Wang. It's right next to the Cafe Wang Restaurant, and it's a very, very, very nice place. Sweet Time Tea is a dessert shop that moved into the space at 2320 D Street back in October of 2020. Sweet Time was created by the owner of Cafe Wang, Fang Wang, and offers a wide variety of teas and desserts that range from cakes, boba, tiramisu, and other specialty and various specialty drinks. Prior to Sweet Time occupying the space, the space had originally occupied by a laundry cleaning business. Once Sweet Time had moved in, the entire space was revitalized so that it meets the needs of the shop, with the inside being remodeled and an indoor seating area for patrons to spend time at being placed near the entrance. Nominated for interior design, Fang Wang, owner of Sweet Time Cafe Wang, representing Sweet Time. Come on up, you two. Guanato's Tacos. You never have enough tacos. I don't care what anybody says. Taco Tuesday, Taco Wednesday, Taco Thursday. So one of my favorites of all time is tacos. So... And of course, all the other food we have in Laverne. Guanato's Tacos is a New Mexican restaurant located at 2855 Foothill Boulevard, Suite A101, and has been inspired by their family and ancestral home of Guadalajara, Mexico. The menu consists of various types of tacos, burritos, quesadillas, and other typical dishes from Guadalajara. Guanato's Tacos moved into the space in October of 2022 where they conducted an interior refresh of the location, updating the space to a style that better represents the restaurant. Nominated for interior design, Francisco Lopez, representing Guanato's Tacos. Come on up. Taco Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Come on. Congratulations to all the recipients. We really appreciate it. And remember, one thing that's successful about Laverne is the fact that our residents frequent your restaurants and all of the restaurants and shops. And it's very important that we stay here locally. It's nice to go outside of the area, keep your money in Laverne, buy your gas in Laverne, buy your groceries in Laverne, go to the restaurants in Laverne, pray in Laverne. You got the story. So anyway, thank you all very much. Now, for those that do not want to stay, you're welcome to leave right now that received your award. So please, we'll wait a couple minutes and let you guys go. Thank you all. Thank you, guys. See you at the restaurant... Restaurants. It's on. I didn't... Yeah. Unless I did it by mistake, but no, I think it's on. Oh, no. That's next. I think we need to all go to the restaurant right now, don't we? All of them. Well, we'll bring the meeting back to order. I would be remiss if I did not mention that gentleman that's screaming across the room right here, the previous Councilmember, Mayor Davis. Welcome, Mr. Davis. And the previous Planning Commissioner, Chair Gilbert Ivey's in the back there, too. Thank you, guys. We move on. It's my distinct pleasure to invite up Three Valleys Municipal Water District. Update presentation by Board Director Jeff Hanlon, newly elected. He's going to give us an update. Jeff, welcome to our house.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hepburn, and honorable members of the council. It's nice to see those who I know and hopefully get to meet those that I haven't met yet. My name is Jeff Hanlon. I'm the Division III Director for Three Valleys Municipal Water District, which represents Laverne and Claremont. I'm here to give a brief update on the water situation in general, projections going into our dry season, and to talk a little bit about Three Valleys' plans and how we're thinking of working with our division cities at this time. So I didn't bring any pictures, but I feel like I maybe should have at this point. We'll use our imagination. I want to start by just reminding us all of something that you're probably aware of. Is in our service area, we are state water project-dependent area. In all of Southern California, where 2/3 of people in California live, we have about 1/3 of the water. Northern California, where there's 2/3 of the water and 1/3 of the people, we need to get the water where the people are. So we have two major sources. We have the State Water Project, which brings water from Northern California through the State Water Project canals to Southern California. And then we have the Colorado River and the Colorado River Aqueduct, which brings it all the way from the Colorado. As you're, I'm sure, aware, last year, we were in a dire situation with State Water Project, a major drought in California, and our northern reservoirs were in really bad shape, which meant that we had emergency conservation for Claremont and Laverne specifically. Three Valleys Municipal Water District covers a much larger area. But for our division, we are uniquely dependent on State Water Project water, unlike the other divisions in Three Valleys Total Service Area, which meant we had one-day-water-a-week provisions and we had emergency drought provisions. Those continue. And however, as you probably know, the rain dancing is working. We're getting lots of precipitation. We're about to get a ton more in the coming week. And State Water Project waters are in much better shape. Our reservoirs upstate are at about 60% capacity. Still a long way to go, but compared to last year, we're continuing to have precipitation throughout the winter, which is a good sign. Our snowpack in the Sierras is above 200% of average, which portends a good summer as that melts throughout the summer and refills our reservoirs. And Metropolitan Water District, which is our parent agency, has requested from the State Water Project 30%... Or rather, State Water Project is considering granting Metropolitan 30% of its requested supply. This is in comparison to last year, when we were granted 5% of requested supply. And in fact, Metropolitan expects that this number may increase to 40 or perhaps 50%. We'll know that in April, at which point I would love to come back here with our general manager and our senior project manager to give a more complete brief with more concrete information about how we can plan out our summer water use. Our conservation measures, emergency conservation measures that were implemented last year, we met those in Claremont and Laverne. We did a great job, and we stayed below the requested conservation numbers. With this wet news... This wet news, this wet winter and good news, I want to just urge... I just want to urge cautious optimism at this point. We... And the reason is, you know, we have this good news about State Water Project, about California waters, our great Sierra snowpack. In fact, Governor Newsom has just ordered, or asked, rather, the Water Resource Control Board to release water from upstate reservoirs, regardless of environmental regulation, actually, into lower state reservoirs so that we can have that water down here for the summer. That's a big issue in and of itself with controversy. But no matter what you think of that, for Southern California, that means a more secure water supply going into the summer. However, the Colorado River is in bad shape right now. And Metropolitan's Total Service Area, when they take into consideration whether to... How to allocate waters throughout the service area, Colorado and State Water Project waters get taken in together. So even though our State Water Project waters are in really good shape, the Colorado is dwindling, and our rights are being renegotiated as we speak, that could mean that Metropolitan Water District puts us in an allocation of less-than-business-as-usual amounts of water, which means we may have to continue our conservation measures, which is a good thing to do anyway, but under orders of Metropolitan Water District, likely not to the degree that we had to last year with the sort of emergency, one-day-a-week conservation measures. So guarded optimism, that's my message. That's our feeling at Three Valleys at this point in time. But again, we'll be making our recommendations when we hear from the state and then from Metropolitan Water District in April. One last thing, a couple of last things. Three Valleys has completed its Miragrand Well in Claremont. It's a new well that is owned and operated by our water district. The Three Valleys Municipal District takes water, buys water from Metropolitan, and delivers it to our service area, Laverne and Golden State and Claremont, sells it to them. But we also own and operate wells so that we can source groundwater when available, because that is a much less expensive water source, helps us keep rates low when those rights are available. So this kind of precipitation soaking into our aquifers right now is good news for that. We're working hard to, at this point in time, sort of come up with a real strategic plan to shape over the next coming years the types of projects we want to do in conservation, but also water sourcing. So we just received a $200,000 grant to help with planning for sort of off-the-shelf projects that we can undergo in the next coming years. We have a $4 million grant, $4 million grant request out right now for conservation dollars. And if that gets granted, that can help us. dollars, and if that gets granted, that can help us ease some of these burdens of conservation on our cities, on our consumers, so that this is not something that hurts people's pocketbooks, which are a number-one concern. So, with that, I would like to take any questions, concerns from you.
I think the biggest thing is, is that we know that, the most frustrating thing for all of us is when this rain comes down, and it's come down in large quantities, that a lot of it just goes straight to the ocean, and it's like, okay, we get it. And I know we've had a conversation before, is Three Valley looking at it also for state and federal dollars for storage? Because if this water comes in, we have a huge downpour, you know, 100-year rain, or whatever you want to call it, especially with excessive snowpack, that the most important thing is to store and recharge our aquifers. So, I mean, and there's been money there, I understand, you know? And then we continually, with this drought, it's so frustrating, is when is enough enough? When do we, you know, really, a drought for us means forever, because we live in a state that doesn't have a lot of water. And now, right now, I understand that the five or six huge water rights people that are out of the state of California, Lake Mead, Colorado River, are dictating to us and giving us less than we really should have coming. And so California, our governor, and everybody has to step in to say, no, we're going to negotiate this with you, because it's unfair. So, we're kind, we've been going ever since I was a child. I mean, we remember when it was back in the day, when water was a scarcity, you know, and we had droughts all the time. And it's like, at some point, and I think that's the direction you guys are going, is to really see, you know, figure out clean water projects, desalinization, but the big thing is getting the federal and state dollars, because none of us can afford a 20 or $30 million project, or a $50 million project. It's like MS4, you know, water compliance. It's like, forget MS4. Store the water. Let it, you know, re-aqua for our system. So, I think that's something that, when you got elected, was the big thing that you said, was that I think that's what you guys are looking at, because we need to not be the old way, it needs to be the new way, and what we're going to do moving forward for our residents. And then the same thing with rates, you know? Crazy. Like Claremont's rates are high, very high. We're not bad, because we do have some of our own water, but just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that comment, and you're absolutely right. I mean, the whole water infrastructure sphere of Southern California is being sort of reinvented at the moment, right? And Metropolitan Water District's One Water Initiative is meant to bring the major water-related agencies together to rethink about this holistically. So wastewater, stormwater, groundwater recharge through water replenishment districts, and of course, our municipal districts, to think about how we keep it in a circular economy and keep charging our aquifers under our feet. You mentioned storage. We have enormous amounts of storage capacity in the San Gabriel Basin, in the Six Basins, in Chino Basin, and we have to figure out how best to get water in it. And so, right now, Three Valleys is in particular, working with and thinking about Chino Basin and San Gabriel Basin, and how we can work with those partners to be able to use that space to park water for us to use, and for Metro to park water that we can then buy and source out of there. So, there are a lot of much smarter people than me working on this, on our fantastic staff, and hopefully, when we bring them here, they'll be able to give you some more details in terms of logistics and how that's actually working out.
I appreciate that, because it's one of those things that just drives me absolutely crazy. You know, back in 2017, when it first, you know, oh my gosh, we're in a drought, that's when we all spent a lot of money on, you know, concrete, fake grass, all those wonderful things, cactus. It's like, okay, really, seriously, you know? But, anyway, I appreciate that. Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir.
I think, I know you said it, but it wasn't as clear. What are our current restrictions right now? Do we have still one-day-a-week water restrictions? I think that's what our residents really want to hear.
Yes. This, I'm not sure if the city manager can chime in. I'm not sure what Laverne's, I believe it is, a one-day-a-week restriction continuing.
I haven't heard a change, but I want to make sure that's what our residents hear today, too.
Is it two-day-a-week? Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
Mine haven't been on since the last big rain.
Yeah, please, take this notice. Turn your sprinklers off tomorrow, or tonight when you go home. We're expected to have an unbelievable amount of rain, and we're supposed to, it mentioned Laverne in the news yesterday morning, five times, on Channel 7, Channel 4, thousand-foot elevation snow. So guess what?
Wow.
Yeah. So if you have towels, guys, if you have towels in that pipe that comes up and goes into your house with that valve on it, wrap that sucker with towels if you can. I'm just telling you, because it freezes. Yeah, it freezes. If snow hits the ground and it stays, it's cold. Jeff, I really appreciate it. Do we have any, you know, open it up to the audience? Anybody have any questions for Jeff while we're here, on the audience?
Yeah, I want water for the garden.
You want water for the garden?
Yeah.
Okay, he'll work on that personally.
Take the water, a lot of rain tomorrow.
Okay. Jeff, thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you back again, and bringing some more news on what we're doing, and how we're going to, yes. Oh, cash. I forgot. Somebody else? Oh, Mr. Bowden.
Hi, Mayor, can you guys hear me?
Yes, 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 yes.
Sounds like a great echo, good old Guam. Thank you. One question for Dr. Hanlon. If possible, the reservoir in North Laverne, I'm hoping that we can at least get that filled up. It's been empty for quite some time, and I don't know if he can help with that, but I really appreciate if we can get that filled up, because sitting empty doesn't help anybody, so, but thank you, that's all.
I think he's fishing, and it's gone away.
I will ask about that. I'm not sure how they time, how it's timed that water moves into that reservoir from the State Water Project.
It's been awful long time.
Okay.
It's been empty for at least a couple of years, I think, but I know it's MWD, and they own it, but, you know? Nope. That water's not ours, at all, so. Councilor Dowell, any questions?
Thank you.
Just make your water free. I understand. Yeah. I really appreciate it, yeah. And then, you know, come back, anything, even some bullet points, especially in the fact of, I know that they're talking about gray water and black water, and they're starting to clean that up, too, and reusing that. So I think recycled water, and, you know, I think that's something that, it's expensive, but that's where the state and federal come in, where we could maybe start at our parks, and start at some of the things that we can have some funding, that we could, as our Public Works Department, can start thinking about that. Reusing our gray water and our recycled water. I think it's extremely important. Some of the cities are using it extensively, and it saves lots and lots of money, and it saves water, so.
Well, thank you for the invitation, and I look forward to it.
We have one more hand?
Yes.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. I was just listening, and I believe I heard Mr. Hanlon say they received a $200,000 grant for a strategic plan. Strategic plans always seem that where ideas go to die, but I'm kind of curious, as the mayor just mentioned, this has been an issue in LA from its inception. Anybody interested, go watch the movie Chinatown. It was in the '30s or '40s, and water's always been a huge issue. So what has been the strategic plan in the past? And how much have all of these companies put into these? Because Mr. Hanlon's just been elected, but this issue's been going on for years, and years, and years. So, maybe he could give some insight into what has been the strategic plan versus what is the strategic plan going forward. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd be happy to do so in very brief form, because it's a huge question. That's the million-dollar question. In the past, the plan has been to seek imported water to drive growth in Southern California. And so, most of our infrastructure planning has been through State Water Project waters to get water from Northern California, and the Colorado River Aqueduct from the Colorado. You referenced Chinatown, that's Mulholland, you know, Los Angeles Department of Water Power, and the Owens River. However, we have tapped all the available sources of imported water. And now, the new plan, in its briefest version, is to continue to use that water, but to realize that it is finite, and to use the water we have regionally in a more circular way. So, be able to use our local sources of water, so that we can start to, and recycled water, capture more stormwater locally, so that we can start to pull back on the amount of water that we rely on from those sources, because we know that our climate is changing to the point where it's going to be less reliable throughout the year. So, it's sort of facing more inward, rather than seeking outward, is in general, the strategic direction of Metropolitan Water.
Any other questions? Dr. Hanlon, I really appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you again, and bringing us some more news, and seeing the direction of our water company.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on to announcements. I think we have some announcements here. Sherri Best.
Good evening. I would like to announce some activities coming up for the Laverne Historical Society. On Monday, March 13th, we will sponsor a presentation by Anna Maria Whitaker on the life of Julia Morgan, who is California's first licensed female architect, and the designer of over 700 buildings in our state. Ms. Morgan is most famously known as the architect who designed the famous tourist castle. The presentation will begin at 4:00 PM at the Hillcrest Meeting House, and be prepared to sign in, check your temperature, and wear a mask. A flyer is attached, and I will be putting flyers out on the, over on the table. The presentation celebrates March, which is Women's History Month. March 25th is the day of activities all day for the Laverne Historical Society. We'll be at Benita High School from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to support the high school auto shop. They are giving a car show that day, so we'll be there supporting the students. Drop by and say hello. And then at noon, we're going to be showing, screening The Graduate, an iconic film from 1967. So, here's to Mrs. Robinson and all of us who enjoyed that film. It'll be screened at Benita High School Student Union Building. Perhaps you're going to recognize the location of the final film scene, and then the famous drive down D Street in the back of the bus. So, can you recognize some of the other location spots, like where his car ran out of gas? You know that? Well, you'll find out. Then at 2:00, we are sponsoring a tour of the Methodist Church, the scene of the final famous scene, and that's right across the street at 2305 D Street. So after you watch the movie, walk across the street, and we'll tour the church. So, the car show, a movie, going to church in the afternoon, it's all good, and you'll get a chance to see that. It's all free, so, from us to you. Now, where else is the Historical Society going to be busy? On the April 1st, look for us at the city-sponsored Excellent Adventure at Heritage Park. Bring your kids to participate in egg hunt, and pay us a visit. We'll have a table there. That event is from, oh, I think it's from 9:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, and it's going to be, it's being advertised in the Laverne Recreation Guide. Correct me if I'm wrong about the time. 9:00 to 12:00? Not till 4:00? Oh, wait a minute, 9:00 to, sorry, 9:00 to 4:00 is the next thing, which is active San Gabriel Valley. We're going to be there, too. And that's going to be the heart of the foothills event through Laverne. We'll be on D Street, so look for us there. We'll be at the Laverne Transportation Hub, and then we'll be on D Street also for the community yard sale on the 29th. So this is where you come, pick up some treasure, and help support the rehabilitation of our 1938 International Truck. So, Laverne is a wonderful place to have many activities, and we are exploring and celebrating our history. Thank you. I'll put flyers on the table.
What about the, being a member of the Historical Society?
What about being a member?
Yeah, what about that lifelong membership? It's what, $200?
A life membership is $200. It's like a life insurance policy. You're figuring that for the next 10 years, you're going to be around to enjoy the Historical Society, and after that, it's free.
And I will say, they have shirts for sale, and they also, and I will say, you know, some shirts, they don't fit real great. Those shirts that you guys have are perfect.
There you go. First quality.
I was also going to mention, you don't have to be a lifetime member. You can do it yearly. $20 for an individual.
Just getting the big bucks up front, come on.
Or 25 for, why do I want to scare people off? Some people, you know?
You can do it in increments, or you do a lifetime?
Some people get the gas bill, and they can't afford it.
That's true.
So, you know, please do join us. Sherri makes excellent newsletters with all kinds of interesting information, and we've got a lot of fun events. So, please see us, because it's time to renew or join.
Make sure you get us the information, so we can post it on our website.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you. Any other announcements? Ms. Bochamp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let everybody know that this Saturday is opening day for City of Claremont Little League. I know the weather is probably not going to cooperate, but many of the Claremont residents and athletes that participate in that did come out to support Laverne for the girls' softball and our Little League, when the bus came home that night, very late in the evening. And they also contributed funds, because, you know, we're kind of a community, not just individual cities when we compete against each other, but when it comes to youth sports, we all support each other. So, I thought it would be nice, since Laverne's opening is not for a few weeks, but Claremont, assuming the weather cooperates, so, but we'll find out. Thank you.
On that note, the girls' softball league was going to start next, this coming Saturday, and they did cancel because of the weather, and I, probably, more than likely, they'll have to cancel. But we do support them, absolutely. I was given something for, this is in March, but Brian Bocock had mentioned that Catherine Barker's coming to update the area in Claremont Hughes Center on March 29th. She's our fifth supervisory district supervisor at 7:00 PM in the Padua Room, no charge. As active, Claremont Nonprofit Group is hosting the event. If there's a chance you'd like to bring it up in your council meeting, that's what I'm doing right now. I'm just reading it off of here. So anyway, we'll post that on our website, and that's coming up in, that is going to be March 29th at 7:00 PM at the Claremont Hughes Center, so. Anyone else? Announcements? Mr. Ivey.
Good evening, Council and City Manager. It's so good to be here. We love Laverne, great town, great time. This is Black History Month, and we want to continue to acknowledge that. I had the great fortune of working with Representative John Lewis, before he passed away in DC. And what a great man, those of you who may not know his history, great civil rights person, great, great leader. Worked with Martin Luther King. And he was subject to dogs biting, and fire hoses on him, and beatings, but you know what? He survived, and it's because of his work. We are where we are today as a community and as Americans, and we should be proud of that history. So I just want to also let you know that CASSI, the Culture Awareness and Social Inclusion Committee, will be meeting again March 1st, and it'll be the beginning of Women's History Month, and we have a great speaker coming to talk about, again, issues that are important to all of us in the city. And we want you to know that everyone is invited. The meeting is going to be at Hillcrest in the Citrus Room, 5:00, and the mayor will tell you, and will tell you, we talk about everything. There are no limits.
Oh, yes, you do.
We sure talk about it. Anything you can imagine, we talk about it. And we talk about it openly, and we welcome all comers to this. No one is ignored, and everybody is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Anyone else on announcements? Who, anybody on that? We go, JR? We're going to close announcements, and we're going to move to consent calendar. Mr. Domer, was there anything pulled on the consent calendar?
There was not, sir.
Oh, I need a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Voice vote. Yeah.
Cash, can you verbally give a vote or a thumbs up on camera? Or down? Was that... Thank you.
We move to item number seven, public hearings. Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the weed abatement protest hearing, and coming before you will be our Fire Marshal, Robert Montagami.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Appreciate the time and opportunity to speak before you. I just want to go over a quick, give you a quick synopsis of our efforts that we take as your fire department in order to mitigate the hazards that are associated with wildfires. Now, I would like to give you a quick description before I introduce our next speaker, who is with Los Angeles County. So when it comes to wildfires, we take this very seriously. It's one of our highest threats to our community, of course. And in the fire department, we address this threat in two fronts. One is the developed lots, as I mentioned in my previous presentation, is the developed lots, and the other is in the vacant undeveloped land parcels. So we work closely with Los Angeles County on the, on developed lands, vacant parcels, to mitigate those hazards as, as, as seasons comes around for, for that time. And on developed lots, we utilize our own staff, our own frontline staff, firefighters and myself. We go out and actually inspect those properties. So on developed side, it works to our benefit in two areas. One is, is that firefighters who would potentially most likely respond to a fire, to a hazard regarding those properties, gives them familiarity with the parcels and the layout of the, of the houses and, and all the structures. And also gets them out to the community, and, and they get firsthand experience and exposure to our, to our properties. And our residents get familiar with our staff as well, our team. So it's really important that we keep that aspect of, of the inspections and ensuring that we minimize the hazards to our structures with our staff, going through a very stringent process of applying the defensible space requirements when it comes to wildfire hazard mitigation requirements. And on the other front, which is the vacant land, is the, we, the city has a longstanding contract with Los Angeles County Department Agricultural Commissioner. And on, on the wild land, or the open space, rather, it takes different effort. It takes a lot more resources to be able to mitigate those hazards, resources that the county has readily available to them. They have the equipment, the staff, the time, not only on administrative side, which is on the forefront, which they have to notify the parcel owners, but also the backend on doing the actual abatement and going through their cost recovery process as well, which is a very arduous process when you are working on trying to mitigate the hazards on vacant land. Because a lot of times, property owners are not on site, they're absentee owners or they're the area owners. So it takes a lot more administrative effort and physical effort to abate those hazards. So that's the, in a nutshell, that's how we approach in mitigating the hazards that are associated with wildfires. And our next speaker, who is a senior inspector with Los Angeles County Department of Agricultural Commissioner, is, was Anne Centeno, will be giving her presentation to you as well, as how this program works and how they go about mitigating those hazards in open space and undeveloped land. Okay? And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council, Mayor. I'm here if we have any general questions regarding the protest hearing, any parcel owners that are concerned and curious as to why they are added onto the list this year. Not much has changed, so many of them might be familiar, and maybe people aren't even there. We do begin inspections around end of June. We do give parcel owners the opportunity to clear the parcels themselves up until June 1st, as well as, depending on the parcel, there's a disking deadline as well. So only a few parcels are disc, and that's the April 16th deadline. After that date, we go in with a tractor and disc those properties. That's out in Mountain Meadows, so. Otherwise, June 1st is the countywide deadline. After that, we do begin our inspections and notify the parcel owners again. At that point, they're also given another deadline, and that's kind of the final deadline to which we will go in and seek enforcement clearance. But, you know, my email and number is always on our letters, and I am open to working with, with parcel owners within a reasonable time to get the clearance done. Typically, we do wrap up the season around September, so this year, or last year, rather, we did one of the final clearances out on the golf course, Sierra Laverne Golf Course, and that was a big project. But with that costly of a project, we do need to take our time and do some due diligence to be able to recover those costs as well. But I am open for any questions from any parcel owners or City Council.
You're going to have a very busy year this year with Sierra Laverne, as it's growing fast, so another year of clearing. So this, the problem and the concern, I know that Councilmember Johnson had mentioned it, we have some open space, and with these rains, a lot of the trees are falling, and as soon as it gets hot, they're going to dry out because they were dead to begin with, but a lot of weed and brush, it's growing, I haven't seen it grown this fast in years because we've never had this kind of rain, but we do appreciate what you guys do for us. So, Council, any questions or comments? Representative Centeno.
I was just curious if the city-owned parcel that's west of Rustic Canyon Park is included in that as far as disking. I know that's been an area that we've used goats and other less offensive ways to clear that property, but it seems like it'd be more cost-effective if the county could come in and disc that and maybe raise the elevation of some of the limbs on the oak trees to prevent that fire from spreading if it ever gets in there again.
So what we do with city-owned parcels or any land or parcel that is managed by the city, we do work with our Public Works Division to maintain and abate any hazards that are, that may be present on those parcels.
I realize that, but we don't have tractors and disking equipment to do that type of service that the county contracts out, and it seems like it'd be to our benefit to make that more fire safe.
Correct. I agree. And, and, and so our first line is going through the Public Works Department, and if they don't have a preferred contractor or whatever, then we, we could resort to Los Angeles County, her department, to have them abate the hazard, which would, of course, be at the city's expense, but that's another issue. So we will work first primarily with the Public Works Department, and if necessary, we will definitely go through the Los Angeles County to get those abated. Absolutely.
Right, yeah, because, and I noticed there was some confusion about homeowners being non-renewed, and in Laverne, that is, in fact, currently what's going on, that Laverne homeowners can be non-renewed because of high fire hazard areas.
Correct. And, and insurance companies, as, as we know, they have their own set of standards, how they really evaluate risks and place risks upon properties for insurance purposes and rates and so forth. So that's a whole different set of area that, that insurance companies, there's a whole different criteria that they have versus what we do and versus the, the risk assessment that the state fire marshal and, and local agencies place upon parcels. Absolutely. So they're, they use different risk factors, and yes, it does affect the rates, and, and the more proactive their residents are, the better it helps them with their insurance and insurability as well as their, their rate as well. And that's why I encourage our residents, I would like to encourage them, that if they do see any hazards, when it comes to wildfire hazards, please contact us, and your, your fire department, being the A.J., the authority having jurisdiction, we can, we will respond to your concerns, and we'll go out, conduct the inspections, and try and work with the property owners to get those mitigated as well. And of course, if necessary, through our county partner as well, to get those vacant lots cleared out as well.
I think we need to also, I know that there was emails going back and forth with Councilmember Johnson, and a big concern is the, above our, the Rustic Canyon, Golden Hills Estates, that Wilderness Park and, and Mountain Meadows, it's important that we probably take a closer eye at that, and if we do have to, we'll talk to the city manager, if we do have to bring in Los Angeles County and Representative Centeno's group, because that is going to be an issue. And also, we did, Councilmember Johnson and myself and Councilmember Lau, were at the swearing and ceremony of Susan Rubio at the UOV, but we had a chat with Ricardo Lara, our insurance commissioner, and his staff, and to bring them back to you, because every day, we're hearing about people's insurance being dropped because of the high fire area, and they said it's a concern, and please contact the office. So we'll be giving that to Mr. Domer and getting some information out to our residents because that, you just, you can't do that, you know, so. But thank you very much. We're going to open up public comments. Do we have any public comment on this issue or this item? Public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody on the, that's a resounding no. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up to the day. Is any other questions for staff or, yes, or Mr. Domer?
No, and I just want to remind people that if they do find issues with council insurance or anything, the California Fair Plan is available, and that website is www.cfpnet.com. And I know that we've had to do it for a cabin property up in the mountains, and it actually wasn't that much more expensive than what we had prior, so they locate you back down to local insurance folks and work with you.
That's great, yeah. They said that they would also come to our meetings. They've been going to many, many, many council meetings because it's been a problem. We did have one come before, but I think it's probably, now it's probably a good time before our fire season. Representative Centeno, thank you so much for your time, and thank you for what you guys do for our community. We appreciate it.
She said thank you.
I get it. Okay. With that, we need a, we need a vote on this, is that correct? Motion?
Second?
We're going to do a roll call vote on this one. Councilmember Keshfagida, he says yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro-Tam Crosby.
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn.
Yes. We move to item number eight, other matters. Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to call up Lieutenant Dransfeld to talk about the resolution approving fees for the issuance of concealed carry weapon permits.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Dransfeld. Always a pleasure to have you in our chambers.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Today, my presentation is on the processing of CCW applications and updating the city's fee schedule. In June of 2022, the Supreme Court ruled on the Bruin versus New York State Rifle Association. This ruling struck down the century-old requiring an applicant to show good cause to obtain a CCW permit. As a result of the ruling, the LA Sheriff's Department, who previously handled CCW permits for residents of Laverne and other municipalities, stated they would no longer process CCW permits for areas that they don't serve. Per the law, the police chiefs required to process CCW permits from residents who reside within Laverne. Since the ruling, Laverne has received over 50 requests to process CCW permits. The department reviewed the logistical task involving processing the complete application and determined we lacked the staffing. The processing of applications includes conducting a background investigation, scheduling appointments, interviews, background interviews, and residence inspections. As such, the department has agreed to collaborate with MyCCW.us, an independent vendor, to process the application, conduct the background investigations, schedule the polygraph examinations, and refer the applicant to the firearms vendor for training and qualification, and also to complete a thorough, comprehensive report for the department to review. A non-refundable fee for this service is $398, paid directly to the applicant to MyCCW.us. The Laverne Police Department remains responsible for fingerprinting each applicant and sending those fingerprints to the Department of Justice for review. The department also conducts a criminal history check. Once the background and psychological exam is complete, the application is reviewed by staff, with the final review being with the police, the chief of police or designee. During this process, the candidate will be interviewed before making a final determination in issuance of a CCW. If the applicant passes all phases of the process, the applicant will be issued a CCW by the chief of police, which is valid for two years. All CCW applicants will be expected to have a psychological exam performed by a licensed doctor. The cost of this exam is $300, and the state law restricts the fee of psychological exams from applicants to $150. Thus, while the applicant will be responsible for paying the $150 directly to the city's current vendor, the counseling team for the exam, the city will incur the remaining cost of $150 per applicant. This $150 pickup by the general fund is an unfunded cost to the city's general fund. The total fee to the applicant for the first year CCW issuance is $1,081. All associated items are attached to the report before you. The department will collect a total of $190 in fees from each applicant. The fees cover department-incurled costs of reviewing the application by staff and processing each phase of the application. Within the report, there's a breakdown of what those fees include. Staff recommends that the city council to adopt Resolution Number 23-10, amending Resolution 22-54 relative to certain fees and policies for services provided by the city of Laverne. Be happy to answer any questions.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I also wanted to kind of bring to the council's attention and to the public, in the fee resolution, what the city does now is we don't do just standalone fees, and then if there's another thing during the year, do another resolution for standalone fees. We amend the entirety of the fee schedule, and so when we are going through the fee schedule, we noticed that there were some exhibits that were wrong regarding refuse fees, so that's why you see in the staff report kind of a call-out section on those. We wanted to make sure that we corrected those as we go forward. The fees were correct in the beginning, but it was the exhibits that it were included that were older and somewhat duplicative of the information. So as we come forward and re-adopt the fee resolution with the budget come May or June, we're going to make sure that all that information is correct, but I did want to call that out because it was a question.
One question before we go to public comment. Why wouldn't we collect, I know that you probably explained it briefly in that, why wouldn't we collect a complete fee and a resident would pay for the entire fee? Instead of the seven, so 50 is $7,500 to the general fund, of that $150 that we're not, that we're encumbering, why wouldn't we have the resident, whoever wanted a CCW, pay that entire amount?
Because, so state law, state law puts a limit on the psychological exam.
It was 150, so limit, not the 300.
It's 150, and unfortunately, the counseling team won't charge 150 for those. They charge 300, so that's kind of the, the offset there. So we have to pick that up.
And, Mr. Mayor, that may be something that, you know, when we do talk with our state legislators, we kind of, you know, maybe kindly ask them to up that amount that we can charge for that, because it is important.
I mean, I, I mean, it's, obviously, the person has to pay that, but as far as I'm concerned, we're coming in to offer a service that it should be not necessarily for profit... that it should be not necessarily for profit, but cover the expenses.
Correct.
So, I mean, that is, that's a very good idea, and I think that's something we need to address. Councilmember Crosby?
But I also agree a psychological test is needed.
No argument on that one.
So after the two years, are the fees the same to renew?
No, so after the two years, the renewal fee for myccw.us is 348. That also, it's still a background, it's an application and background process, just like the first one. The, the only difference is that unless there's something that shows cause to redo a psychological exam, one will not have to be redone. So that will save the applicant $150. And then also, same with the fingerprinting. They will not have to be fingerprinted. Everything else will still have to be completed.
The $150 administrative fee to the city comes on renewal as well?
Correct.
So does the weapon safety, is that also upon the renewal, do they have to redo the weapon safety as well?
Yes, that's a great question. So on your initial CCW for the training and qualification, they're required to attend an eight-hour class, and which will include training and qualification. Upon renewal, it's a four-hour class. So that will not only require them to have an update and qualify, but it will also reduce their cost, because instead of paying the $250, they'll pay probably around $150.
If the resident has had a CCW from a different jurisdiction, does that help? Or does that change the fees at all in the initial application?
No, it does not change the fees. It's all the same.
Thank you, Lieutenant. We're going to open up to public comment. Anybody have a public comment? We have one here. Mr. Davis. Thank you, Lieutenant Dransfeld, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
We may need your services again.
Thank you, Honorable City Council and Mr. Mayor, staff. I guess I'm going to keep it short and just provide a few recommendations that I would like you to consider in this fee structure. The first is, and it sounds like there's some concurrence, but I would encourage you to increase the administrative fee to $300 so that there is no drain from the general fund to support this fee. I don't know how many fees that we have in our city that are subsidized by the general fund, but this certainly shouldn't be one of them. A second would be that at the renewal, I would encourage you to require a psychological exam every two years. So each renewal requires a psychological exam, and you would also then increase the administration fees on the renewal to $300. And, and lastly, I would invite you to include additional language, because as we know, none of our rights are unencumbered. And the Second Amendment states that a well-regulated militia being necessary to secure, to the security of a free state. So in order to support that, I think that anybody who comes for a concealed carry weapon registration should identify which militia they belong to and that that membership be verified by the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else for a public comment? Please. Chief Gonzalez, come on up.
I just want to make note that the Los Angeles County Police Chiefs Association is working on finding a group outside of the counseling team to reduce that cost of $300. So we are still in the process of ensuring that all, that 150 will cover the complete cost for a psychological exam. So in the future, that may no longer be the case.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to address the, believe me, we thought long and hard about whether we could try and recoup that cost, but we're not allowed to increase another fee in order to make up for that difference. Unfortunately, that's the limit that the state has set, and in the absence of a cheaper provider or a legislative solution, we are not able to recoup that charge in a different way.
At least we can look at it, though, and go through our other elects. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Lau?
I have two questions. One, is there any, are there any grounds for revocation of a CCW permit once provided? Are there any, you know, is there any situation wherein that can be, that would be, there would be grounds for revocation? Oh, sorry.
Anybody else for a public comment before we answer that question?
Yes, a quick comment. I'm glad that Mr. Davis just showed us why he was voted out of office. Citizens' rights are critical, and I'm glad he's gone. Thank you.
With that, no other? Yeah. Any, any other public comment? Mr. Dransfeld, sorry, we're going to?
No problem.
Yes. Come on up.
Will there be a liaison with the police department here to have some criteria, point of contact to get the process started?
We'll let the lieutenant come back up once we're done with public comment to address that. It's a good question. Thank you. Lilly.
My name is Lilly. I have something to say about CCW. Okay. I just want this to make it easier for the people like me. I really consider I should have this with me, because I'm home alone sometimes. And actually, the mass shooting in Mentor Park, one of my friends with them, I still couldn't believe she's the one got shot and died there. I still have a problem to making video with her picture right now. So, but I know she just will agree with me. If somebody there had gun with them, they could stop the shooting after, because they really think it's a quaker. They think it's a celebration. They didn't really notice it's gunshot at the beginning. But if, if somebody, if one people have gun there, less, less people die. So that's why I'm serious, consider I should have a gun. I'm a lady, I'm home alone, I always in my front yard gardening. I should, this is my right. So I just hope CCW will be easier for the people, at least half people, 50%, maybe, who will willing to have gun, this our right to protect ourselves and our family of friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Any other public comment?
I have a question, is that right?
You can come up to the mic, please.
John Wilson, I have a question regarding the permit. Once it's issued here in Laverne, does it, is it good for the state? Where's it, where's it good for, number one? And number two, if it is good for outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Laverne, how's everybody, when they apply, they make sure they're an actual resident of the city of Laverne?
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? We're going to close public comment and bring it back. Lieutenant, come on up. I think you have three, three or four questions you need to answer there.
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the point of contact. So residents can always go to our website, it's lvpd.org. And that's where the process will start. But I'm fortunate, our point of contact's actually here, Sergeant Martin Weinrib. He will be the point of contact for the program. So always feel free to reach out to him via email. It's mwinerib@lvpd.org. Or you could call him at the station, but he?
Here's his home number.
Yes. He's been?
Job, Lieutenant.
He's been doing an outstanding job. And so if you reach out to him, he will get back to you in a timely manner with any questions. And then the second question, sorry, sir. John, I forgot the question. What was your question? Jurisdiction. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Okay, so jurisdiction. So the CCW is, is issued to the resident of Laverne. However, it's good in the state of, the entire state of California. So if you have a CCW that's issued here as a resident and you are in Northern California, as long as you're in the state of California, it's, it's good for the entire state. So I hope that answered your question.
His last question, I'm sorry, was, we verify only residents of Laverne can get it from Laverne?
That's, that's correct. You must be a resident of Laverne, and that is all verified in the application and background phase of the process.
If this becomes in effect, once it comes back to us for a vote, Mr. Davis brought up some very good points as far as this can morph. I think it's very important, psychological testing and making sure the people that are getting a CCW can control that and, and have the wherewithal, you know, because we've had so many issues that the psychological testing and the background testing is so important. And those questions have to be asked. And not to say that, you know, if you're part of a militia or anything like that, I'm just saying that it, it's extremely important. So as these morph, and I understand there's a cost here that we have to adhere to. It looks like our costs are, are at the top of the range when you look at all the other cities that are doing this. I understand. But I think it's very important that we make sure that if things do change, we change our ordinance for our CCW carry to make sure that we're covering, to make sure that the people that are getting them are going to use those weapons in a safe manner, the manner that we're trained in. So just FYI, more than that.
Absolutely agree.
Any questions? Councilmember Lau?
I'm going back to my, no, so I'm curious then, again, back to my question, which was, is there any grounds or are there any grounds for someone to have it revoked? Or is it just sort of, you know, as long as you're, I don't know if there's any situation, but I'm, I'm a little bit, you know, I, I think about the safety of people in general.
Of course.
And so, you know, is there ever a case or are there ever instances where a revocation would be necessary? My other question is, does the police department keep this list? Or does it go with the state so that whoever has one can be, it can be checked if they're traveling with it?
And then release that information to?
I don't know if that, I don't know how that works, so I'm, I'm curious as to?
And those are great questions. So the Department of Justice basically handles this. And when a CCW is granted, that information is transferred to the Department of Justice. And there's, Department of Justice has, you know, they're notified of certain things. One is if a CCW holder, let's say, has a mental health hold for whatever reason. Or they have a, they're arrested for a crime that would impact this CCW permit. Then in fact, they would notify us, and then we could revoke that or would revoke it based on the criteria. So yes, there are situations that we would be notified and revoke that CCW permit.
But those are extensive. There are a lot of criteria as far as the training that, that you can be revoked.
Yes, but they can, just because you, we issue a CCW doesn't mean it's mine at all cost. You know, if, if you meet a certain criteria, criminal history or mental health issue, that can be revoked.
If, if you're doing the renewal and you said the psych test is not guaranteed for having to be done on the renewal, is, is it the way we say that is? Or could we require that for the renewal? Or is that based on all the, the laws on, on the CCWs? So do we have, do we have to not require a psych test for renewals? I know it'd add extra cost for Laverne, I understand. I just want to make sure that we are?
Are you speaking on your own accord?
Nope.
That is a touchy, a very touchy subject, and we really follow the parameters within the law. The law, we are within our, the city's right to ask for a psychological exam. Any further exam will have to come with something from the DOJ that says? Yes, a reason. So for renewals, yes.
Delicate way to put it, wasn't it? Very diplomatic, chief. I think with that, any other questions for staff? Then we need a motion.
And again, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, these are for the fees. So if the recommended motion would be to?
Accept the fees for the CCW and also for the refuse changes.
Correct, adopt the resolution.
So that motion will be read.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
We're going to vote or call, we're going to?
We're going to do a rule call, so. See if we can get Councilmember Cash Falgida? That's a thumbs up, that's a yes. Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Lau? Mayor Pro Tem Crosby?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Thumbs up, yes. Motion carries. We will now have concealed carry permits in Laverne after a major hiatus. Thank you, that's a lot of hard work, guys, I know it's been, and I know that it wasn't easy. And we'll make sure that Officer Weinrib's phone number gets out to everyone in the community. And, yes. We move on to number nine, public comments and oral communications. Any wish to speak? Ms. Beauchamp, I hope you have that three pages is, you know. You got three minutes, girl, three minutes. We do have a closed session.
The city council and the entities that voted in favor of the residential residents that just won that design award, every single one of you should be ashamed. This council and the city has nearly coerced the residents into saving water in this time of so-called drought to acquiesce Governor Grusum's assemblies that he signed into law. That home had a huge swimming pool. I don't know if all of you looked at that picture. It was beautiful, but it was a huge swimming pool. That is an irresponsible use of hundreds of gallons of water. There are so many residents within this city that gave up their beautiful landscape yards to go to natural desert landscapes. Some of them were helped with the MWD program that encouraged that and helped provide some funds for that. But this is a prime example of what is wrong with the procedures, the policies, the ordinances, and the municipal codes. You pick and choose which ones you want to enforce. So while the rest of us are scraping by, not watering our grass, which someone said it's two days a week, we were never told that. A south side of baseline was one day a week. North of baseline was two days a week because they're considered high-fire hazard area. And then on top of it, you have the three water valleys representative come up here and talk about continued water conservation after you issued that design award. So, good job, city. Great, great job. Secondly, I would like that the city council, please not follow the steps of city of Claremont. I don't know if you heard about the buzz lately, but there is this thought police with this anti-hate speech that's going around in their city. There's yard signs that say, "Stop Trumpism, Save Democracy," other, you know, homelessness, all kinds of different types of topics. But they, they passed a resolution, which they didn't explain what the consequences were if you were in violation of such. But I think when you open the door to such topics, you are actually violating the First Amendment right of the freedom of speech. The city has ordinance for not having yard signs. You know, there's a, there's a timeframe when it's election time. And there are other yard signs out there for Cassie and love and diversity. I think there's a couple that I've seen for ULV. And, you know, no one complains about that, that, that's perfectly fine. We're a city of acceptance, and I just ask that the city don't go down that road. That is just absolutely ridiculous. that the city don't go down that road, that is just absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. Anyone else? Yes, sir. You've got it right here. Mr. Wilson, I've got your little blue card.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff, city staff. I'm gonna ask today to get some help, and also to find out how I can help, get a streetlight at the intersection of Fulton and Arrow Highway. I purpose, I work in Riverside, and I purposely do not take that, because my neighbor, he lost a car there about six or eight months ago, he got T-boned. Another neighbor lost a friend who was killed at that intersection. A week ago yesterday, because they have Gary closed for the construction of the goal line, normally that's where I go to hit on the ten, I went down there, and a week ago yesterday, I was inching out, and I got T-boned. And the only thing that saved my life was the side airbags, and I just found out today they've totaled my car. So I'm gonna have to go through that. But in talking to a lot of people, I've been in this city for 27 or 28 years, and in talking to a lot of people about this particular intersection, people don't take it, they always talk about, they know somebody that got hit there, you know, if you're trying to come out and turn left, there's just a whole series of cars down Arrow Highway, you can't see, and you just got inch, 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 and that's what I did, I was inching out, and next thing I know. Now, when I called in, the 911 call, they didn't know who to give it to, Pomona or Laverne. So I guess they gave it to Pomona, and they were taking a while, I have the business number for Laverne, and so I called the business number, and they sent somebody out from Laverne as well. And the officer that responded from Laverne, she told me that the best thing to do is go before city council and talk about the light. She also told me that she gets tickets, a lot of people on Arrow Highway there, because even when we were sitting there with our cars in that first lane, people were just buzzing around there like there was no tomorrow, it's like they didn't care there was an accident there or anything. Now, because we were okay, and we exchanged information, they didn't take a report, but I don't want to just come up here and bitch and moan and cry about, okay, poor me, this happened to me. I think this was a calling for me to come up and say, we need to do something, and I want to help. And I don't know if it's going between, Pomona says, you know, half of it's ours, half of it's yours, and there's a fight over who wants to pay for this streetlight. But it seems to me that there's enough data, and I'm gonna start looking it up, to find out how many accidents there have really been there, how many fatalities, I mean, I mean, I could have actually been killed a week ago yesterday, I know it, if it weren't for those side bags, I know it, you know, and it's amazing to me that there haven't been more fatalities at that, that intersection. I'm sure all of you know what, what I'm talking about, and I live right on Brant there, so I either have to go down there or go up to the Gary. Is that the time limit?
No.
Okay.
No, you're good.
Down at LA City Council, they got a light, a clock, and it goes down, down, down. Okay.
Well, LA, they cut you off.
Yeah, no, I've been there.
They'll even.
I've been cut off over there. But in, in any case, I don't want to just come up and say, we need a light, do it. I want to find out how I can, Wendy, I've known you for years, okay, Councilman Johnson, you and I stood in my front yard during the campaign, we talked. I want to email you guys and say, what can I do to help? Because I want to be part of the solution in this. I think it's really, really important that we do something about this. I mean, who knows, you know, tomorrow, somebody could get killed there. Yes.
Point of clarification, you're asking for a signal, not a light, just a?
No, I want, I want a working signal, traffic signal, yes. A traffic signal.
I just want to make sure clarification.
At the, at the intersection of Fulton and Arrow Highway, right there. And even from what the police officer said that morning, she even told me, she said, people coming 40, 50, 60 miles an hour down Arrow Highway, so even if you're inching out, and it's too late, once you get out there, and that's, that's what happened with me. So I just wanted to bring that up today, and I'm sorry I went over time, but thank you for your time.
No, you didn't, that was, that was medication.
Okay, thank you.
Told me to keep time, but, so, Mr. Mayor, on that, I do appreciate that, so that intersection is 75% Pomona, 25% Laverne, but the good news is, is that the goal line will be putting in a traffic signal at that intersection, so what we'll do?
Oh, that's right, that's part of the goal line plan.
Yeah, so.
That's his.
Yes. So what we'll do is we'll find out when that is in the phasing, and then because it's 75-25, at that point, you know, we'll be sharing the cost of the maintenance of the signal and all, stuff electricity, 25% Laverne, 75% Pomona, but?
Perfect timing.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah, perfect timing for us to put one in, but I mean, we'll check, we'll check with the goal line, I'm on that committee, so to find out what their plan is, yeah, or what the dates are. Because it's, well, it's possible, because the goal line's supposed to be finished the 25th. They're putting in the, the cantilever, not the cantilever, but the cannonary systems, which are the, which can carry all the power lines, so that's part of the street, and most of the street work is done, except for the closure on Gary, there'll be a few little closures, so we'll see, see where it's at, we'll check with staff and find out. Any other public comment? Pam Berry, then Ms. Anderson. Keep an honor.
Uh-oh, what do I do now? I don't know if I should touch this thing or not. Little bit, okay. Good evening. Pam Berry, Laverne. Okay, so I just want to talk a little bit about the, well, two things. First of all, I know we have a little blurb at the top of our agendas regarding disabilities and modifications and things to do, you know, let people know 48 hours ahead if we can do something. We have people in this meeting every time that are hard of hearing. My mother can't, there's no way she could even come, because, I mean, you know, I told her one time she needed to get hearing aids, and she said, what do I need a hairnet for? And so, is there something we can do short of rewiring everything, just to get like, you know, those little Bluetooth things that they can hear, or something that will help them, that would be really great. The other thing has to do with the Claremont resolution that they did regarding hate speech, and as, as I kind of looked through it briefly, it, it was not just a symbolic, hey, we're standing against this, we're not tolerating this, this is no good, but they also included verbiage in there related to reporting, investigating, and then some sort of action or penalty, which I think is beyond the scope of a city council, because we already have laws that identify what hate is, they're federal, they're state, we have police, we have courts, so that's kind of that part, and it's not that it's like, okay, we don't want to dabble, you know, just stay away from hate. Everybody agrees hate's not good, but the definitions can be very murky, and, and sometimes, especially, it's even a generational thing, because, I mean, terminology and viewpoints and things have changed so dramatically since I was young, and now they're changing faster than ever. I mean, every year, there's huge, like, steps that are, what's the normal, what's not. But I, you know, I use the word hate to deal with things like, I hate to see kids being abused. I hate the fact that people have to deal with cancer and Alzheimer's, I hate traffic, I hate Brussels sprouts. There's a lot of things that will work to that, but then people can take a conversation and turn it into something it's not. Like grandma can love everybody, but she says, there's boys and there's girls, and that's it. And then suddenly, that's hate. I know that, somebody mentioned to me that there was a post on Nextdoor where somebody was talking about folks, and they got jumped on for using the word folks, and I'm like, I don't get it, because my folks are my parents and my family, and his folks are my husband's family. It's not a word that's even used in relation to anything hateful at all, but it's so easy for people to interpret and judge, and I can see that a resolution of that court, it's not even just a symbol, symbolic, it's an action. It's gonna turn into people being insulted, or offended, or whatever, where there's nothing there, and it's gonna turn into a big slope downwards that's more divisive. So I just kind of think that's not a council thing anyway, we've already got the laws, we've already got the law enforcement, and that's just my point of view, and I still hate Brussels sprouts.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Anna?
I also want to talk about the Claremont resolution. Very nice people in Claremont, I know a lot of people in Claremont that are just like Laverneans, okay, they're just great people, but it seems the city council is a little off, and I'm just being proactive. I mean, they can do what they want, they were voted in, and if people want that, that's fine, but Laverne is a different animal than Claremont. I've been coming to city council meetings, God, for I don't know how long, where we had people out the door for that lose homes that were gonna be built on Marshall Canyon, and I think Tim's the one that finally had to say, let's put it to a vote, because one of the council members told the newspapers the next day, we were a lynch mob, okay, she was not happy. And so, we've watched in our city, a lot of what some people will call hate speech in here, okay, they've been nasty to people, they've been separated in groups, and it didn't, we had a lot of speech in here, a lot of speech, and I've got to give it to Don Kendrick. He always sat there and let it, let people talk. I've heard him many times when the council would say, let's stop this, and he would say, let the people talk. And because he let the people talk, and sometimes it wasn't nice, and sometimes it was contentious, if some of you remember, during the, the mayor elections, oh, it was horrible in here, okay, there was all kinds of stuff going on in here, nasty things, but he still let people talk, and we talked through it, and we became friends after, the two, two groups of people, one for, one for Don and one for Tim, and we became friends after. It didn't matter, because we talked it out. We fought, we said what we had to say, and if, if the current Claremont City Council heard what was going on in here, everybody'd be in some kind of speech jail. I'm not kidding, it was bad sometimes. But this is how Laverne is. Laverne, we're not, we're not, most of us are not thin-skinned, okay? We can fight, we can fight with each other, we can disagree with each other, but we can become friends. Mr., Mr. Muir is here, so I'll tell you a story. I was really nasty to him one time, really nasty up here on the podium, and I felt bad because I crossed the line, I know I did. Couple years later, I saw him at your meet and greet, and I went up to him and I said, you know, I wanted to tell, do you remember when I said that? And he goes, yeah, I remember. And I said, I want to apologize, because I went over the line, and I felt bad all these, this time, and we hugged each other, and we became friends, and we're still friends. But this is how you get to one, one point to another, you talk. And for some, for the council to just say, that's hate, who's, who in the, the city council would want to be judge and jury on what hate speech is to the residents? It's ridiculous. We are a different kind of animal here, we are not Claremont, even though there's a lot of great people in Claremont. And I want to make sure it continues, and we don't have resolutions like they just put in, because it is not the job of the city council to get into deciding what hate speech is, or who says hate speech, and that's the job, we already have laws, that's the job of the justice, the police, the detectives, and everything else, it's not the job of the city council to do. And, you know, our city council should be here to do the financial, the financial health of the city, and the structural health of the city, and that kind of things. So I just want to make sure, because I know that there are people in our city that would love this stuff, and they'll jump on it, and they'll come to the city council, and they'll want to push this stuff. I don't want our city council to be like that. I've made a lot of friends for, from people that I totally disagreed with over the years in the city council, and they're friends with me. But that's how you get from one point to another with people, you talk. That's all.
Thank you very much. Lily?
My name's Lily. Actually, I read the post, and then I really saw the discussion about the hate speech, anything. I think I could have something to say, as an Asian minority female, I should have some benefit loss of this, right? And like, Asian hate, I never think any Asian hate, never, ever. And Asian women get robbed because we carry better purse, right, carry cash, and just better, and even, you know, it's just dry slow, my, my car just got hit, you know, yesterday, so Asian women drive so slow, but I don't really care, even my, I love this city, I live here, how many years? 17 years. I love the city, I love my neighbor, they love my English, I say, hey, my English, no, your English is perfect, so, okay, my essence, very strong. So I think it's very friendly, I never really like care of that, even my kids, do you get any races? My kids are like, ching, ching, do you care? Who care, right? So I just don't like think it's bring up over and over, get tired of that. Focus water, water, we need water, right? I just hope we could focus something more important, okay? Actually, the side bother me, Bonita, Emilio, the church, break up with the white Jesus. Who's in that church? Why have this, why Jesus? I even don't know Jesus, his skin color's white, or like Asian Hebrew, never mentioned in Bible. I, I, I'm Christian, baptism 2004, so in my church, a lot of Asian family, when, Y Emilio, very conservative church, a lot of Asian family, we never really think about their background, what country, we start from English, because everybody know English, right? And then we start, what's your second language, third language, fourth language, because we come different country, but we don't want to emphasize that. Why we emphasize that? We just speak English, Asian America. So I just, every time I see like something colored things, my kids learn from school, CRT survey last week about fact check, LGBT, anything, you know, we really pretty much not like it for family value. So I just hope city council, everybody focus something more important. The gas bill, crazy, the water, my husband accident dig the, broke my dripping system, dripping system to save water, right? Something more important we need to solve. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Anyone else? Anybody online?
Last council meeting, I thought we said we were gonna have a proclamation in honor of Black History Month, and I didn't see that happen, so I was questioning that, and I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Let the city manager answer that one. Thank you.
No, the council action last meeting was to add it to it and approve it, and then it was signed by the mayor a couple days ago, so it's, we have a proclamation celebrating February's Black History Month, so.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Wonderful, thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but after a number of residents spoke about the Claremont resolution, I just thought I'd give some background. It appears on February 14th, the City of Claremont passed a resolution, and I'm reading from it, condemning hate crimes and any other form of racism, religious or ethnic bias, discrimination, incitement, or violence, or targeting a minority. This was in response to a number of antisemitic flyers, propaganda flyers that were circulated in the community, and so the city council, in response to that act of, you know, vile hate, came together and said that the City of Claremont condemns hate crimes, hate speech, and any other forms of racist, religious, ethnic bias, discrimination, incitement, violence. of racist, religious, ethnic bias, discrimination, incitement, violence. That was the resolution. Folks can read it, it's available. There is one section that people seem to have been taking issue with, that says that the city of Claremont will investigate all credible reports of hate crimes, and incidents, and threats against minorities, and hold perpetrators of those crimes, incidents, and threats accountable. I don't see anything controversial about this, I don't see anything radical about this, it seems like leadership to me. And I would hope that in our city, if there were reports of hate crimes, or threats, or incitements of violence against anyone, that the city would do the same and respond likewise, and investigate and hold folks accountable. So I, I really, I, I don't know why this has become a topic of concern here, you know, what, a resolution that Claremont passed, but I just thought I'd provide the background, and just provide one voice that I, I don't think there was anything dangerous or worrisome about what they did. It looked a lot like leadership to me. So, thank you very much.
Kathy Newlin. My comment is about the resolution. I think it's very divisive, but what my concern is, I don't want it to come to our city. I think it's very bad for the businesses, the small businesses and the restaurants. It makes me think twice about going to Claremont, because you feel like you're going to be being watched, you're going to be, you know, and then I wouldn't want that for our city. Our businesses suffer enough trying to stay afloat. And if you're sitting at a table, and someone next to you hears an off-color joke or something going on at your table, they can turn you in. And I just don't think that makes Laverne what it is, a welcoming city. So I just think it's totally unnecessary, and I hope that we can be proactive and, you know, head it off from coming to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
My goodness. I know that we've heard a lot from residents and saying, you know, this is a nice city, and welcoming, and not racist, and, yeah, all those good things. I, I believe in those things. I think, you know, every city has their own forms of racism and, you know, problems, but I think if we are truly a welcoming city, right, then we shout that from the rooftops. Why would we want to hide behind not being a welcoming city? We do the proclamations. Mr. John, I don't know why the proclamation wasn't presented today, but we can discuss that at a different time. But thank you for signing it. Tim, and I just think that, you know, it's, this is kind of getting overblown. It's not here yet, and wants to be, you know, proactive, I get that. But I don't understand the cause and the meaning behind it, because if we are truly a welcoming city, not racist, and we're against hate bias and discrimination, then we should stand behind that, and we should shout it from the rooftops. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Good evening again. I think Yvonne just proved her point. I've lived in Laverne for almost 40 years. All you have to do is walk down the street, go in a store, do anything in Laverne, and you see a multicultural, welcoming committee that shouts that from the rooftop every day. You don't have to do that with a proclamation like Claremont. Claremont is a city, if you remember, recently had, I believe, their school, their school superintendent, a gay man invite a bunch of high school kids to his house with liquor being served to the kids, and scantily, I'll refer to it as scantily clad other men. You go down the street in Claremont, and you see anti-Trump, anti-this. So it always seems to be that it depends on which side of the fence you're on. And I think Yvonne just proved it. She moved here, I believe, a year or so ago. I've been here for 40 years. Most of the people that spoke tonight have been here for many, many years. This is the most welcoming city I have ever been in, again, for 40 years, and if there is a crime committed of any type, we have a excellent, superb police force that would investigate anything. And through the last two years, there have been numerous meetings when the police chief and numerous others have been asked, do we have any hate instances in this city? And the answer is a resounding no. So, thank you, Laverne. We are a welcoming committee, we are a multicultural city, and thank God for that. I love this city. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. We're going to close public comment and bring it up to the dais. Resolution of the city council, resolution number 2023-12. Resolution of the city council of the city of... Wait a minute. Don't want to read that one.
What the mayor's going to go grab is a proclamation for Black History Month. It is very appropriate that we have, we, we voted on it last month, and we agreed on it, but we want to make sure it's public. And so the mayor went to go grab it, and so that he can present it to the public.
Sorry for the confusion. It's raining, oh my gosh, something new. See, Laverne proclamation, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the legacy of African-Americans whose power to lead, overcome, and expand our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development has helped the nation become a more fair and just society. And whereas the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History set the theme for 2023 as Black Resistance, in recognition of the continued advocacy of African-Americans for justice and equity. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Laverne continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens past, present, and future are respected and recognized for their contributions, and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, the world. And whereas the city of Laverne is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout the state and nation. Now be it proclaimed by the city of Laverne that the month of February 2023 be recognized as Black History Month. We encourage the observance of, to all citizens, so that they may celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Dated this 6th of February 2023. Now we move to council comments. Who would like to start? Councilmember Lau.
I didn't even say I want to. I just kind of wanted to go over this month and just talk about some of the things that have occurred. For those of you who, I hope by now have met Tupelo, Tupelo had her first birthday at the beginning of this month. She is not allowed to take treats, because I tried, but she is welcome to be pet, so if you see her, say happy birthday. I also wanted to, if, if you had, didn't have the chance to go, I know it was on Monday, February 13th, but the state of the city is online streaming. I think you can get it from the Chamber of Commerce, you can get it on Facebook. But if you're interested in seeing a synopsis of what is going on, Mayor Hepburn did the presentation at the university, and it was, it was, it was a nice opportunity to highlight the good things that have been occurring. This past Saturday, actually, let me go back, on February 11th, I did talk about National Girls and Women in Sports Day, which occurred at the University of Laverne, and I strongly urge, if you aren't following the University of Laverne on social media, or following what they do, they do offer a lot of amazing programs and a lot of amazing things for residents and people in our community. It was a great collection of women professional in the sports area, and we had some lovely students from Bonita and some neighboring schools who attended, and I was so blown away by the students and their participation and their engagement, asking really thoughtful questions, and really getting into the networking, because as you all know, that's really important as you make your way through your journey through life and into your careers, it's good to know and make that support group. The, on, this past Saturday, we had the swearing in of Senator Susan Rubio, which also took place at the University of Laverne. It was a very well-attended event with a lot of elected officials from numerous cities, local, state, everywhere. And it was just really amazing. But I think one of the most amazing things to me, and I think what is an incredible testament, is that you have a woman who is a senator, who has a sister who's an assembly woman, who came from a family who, whose father was a farm worker and whose mother was a housekeeper. And if that doesn't talk, tell you about the resilience of the American spirit and of immigrants, I don't know what does. So truly amazing, amazing opportunity, and I know Mayor Hepburn and Councilmember Johnson were there as well, and I know there was a good opportunity to hobnob, and I know that the mayor has a list of everybody that was there. But it's a good opportunity for us to get to know other elected officials and other folks that we can partner with and hopefully collaborate with, because I think we're all in this together, we're not going to do this on our own. Just to, you know, for those of you who are already thinking about Sunshine, the first meeting of the Fourth of July Committee is tomorrow morning. So get ready, it's coming. So we're really excited, but if you have thoughts and ideas, both myself and Councilmember Cash serve on that committee. And last but not least, you know, I just wanted to say, if you haven't had a chance to educate yourself a little bit about Black History Month, there are some really amazing contributions to our country that have occurred from Black Americans. So I know that my work has been doing highlights on Black Americans in STEAM, and that's been really amazing, just to see the things that we take for granted around us. And of course, coming up in March is Women's History Month and International Women's Day, and a preliminary, I guess, get ready for it, because I always get really excited about March. But as always, be kind to each other, and have a good rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau.
I'd just like to say, it was a pleasure to be at ULV for the swearing in of Senator Rubio. It was interesting to hear the family's story, parents having been deported and come back into the, to the United States. Just an honor to hear all of that. I would like to thank the Laverne Police Department for providing an honor guard for Don Redmond's service this past Sunday. That was very appreciated by the family, and for those of us in attendance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Mayor Protam Crosby.
As Councilmember Lau was spreading the birthday wishes for Tupelo, I'd like to spread happy birthday to our mayor. His birthday was last week, and today is Chief Nigg's birthday, and so is Candace Bocock-Moffa. So happy birthday to all of our...
We like that February, don't we?
I want, I want to congratulate our boys' basketball team from Bonita High School. They beat San Dimas last week in the quarterfinals of CIF, made it to the semifinals, played it at home last Saturday night. They, they were defeated, but they, they made the qualifications to go on to state. So root on our Bonita Boys Basketball Team. Thank you, Mayor, for reading the Black History Month proclamation. I believe last month, last, our meeting last, when we decided to make sure and adjust our calendar, and put it on the agenda, and put it, that we are going to enact it, we, we needed to make it public. And appreciate that you did that tonight, and that any of our proclamations that we do celebrating our residents, that we should always make that public. So appreciate that that happened. And then my, my last comment today is that we have a great, great resource in our backyard. Yesterday, I, I had the pleasure walking my family through Marshall Canyon. And just hiking, and being with your family, being in, in nature is a great, great experience. Not all of us get out far from our houses, and we have it right here. Past five different horses, bikes, and many, many families walking up through the canyon, and just, it was, it was a great time spending with, close with my family for a couple hours walking through. And, you know, I, I love golf courses, everybody knows I love golf courses. I spent all day Saturday, Miss, Senator Rubio's swearing in, her and I worked together in Monrovia, have a long past together, but I was walking the golf course, watching my daughter, walking through Sierra, Sierra Laverne.
Did she shoot?
Oh, she, she shot a 79 and 76.
Oh, God.
So, she played well. But walking yesterday through Sierra Laverne, just, I, I miss that. I miss that golf course there. But I do want to say, going back to nature, and nature taking over, that, that is, that is good too. But I, I wish we had still our golf course there, but walking through the canyon, you, you can't beat it. So go up there, visit it, it's our natural resource right here. Thank you for the county for making sure that we have those trails, and appreciate what we have in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Crosby. Mr. Cash, Councilmember Cash.
Hi, thank you all, I appreciate you for allowing me to be here today and participate. Can you guys hear me good?
Yes.
America, yeah, I don't want to yell too much before the MPs come running in here and take me away, but listen, thank you for allowing me to participate in our great city of Laverne. I wanted to thank you, I look forward to coming back home and sharing what I did in the month of February. So thank you once again, and stay army strong.
Stay safe. Councilmember Cash.
Everybody's pretty much covered most of it. I just wanted to say, add to the girls', girls' water polo, varsity water polo, went to CIF first round, they did lose in the first round, but they did finish second, I think, in the Polomares League. And so kudos to the girls, another great job. As Councilmember Lau so eloquently put it, it was quite a day Saturday for Laverne, having such a dignitary swearing in for Susan Rubio in our little community. And believe me, a lot of people know where we are now, and they haven't been home for a number of years. The higher electeds love coming to our little community, the family, just a few of the people, it was obviously Susan Rubio, but Elena Kulonakis, who was our attorney, our lieutenant governor, she did the swearing in. As nice, and Blanco Ruber, her sister, just as sweet as could be. We had Devor Lieberman, obviously, Ricardo Lara, our insurance commissioner. We had Jeffrey Prang, who is our assessor. We had a judge, we had mom and dad, we had the whole family there, and I'm probably missing a few, but it was, it was, it was an amazing day, actually. Nice celebration, nice little... Nice celebration, nice little snacks after. But the wonderful thing about this is that there were other communities and other electeds, mayors, council members from across the board, Baldwin Park, Rosemead, Alhambra, San Gabriel, people that we all deal with and especially on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. The, we, the ring of the San Gabriel Valley is strong, especially with our higher electeds. Money comes into our communities because of that. And it was a really, really nice day, so. And I appreciate you guys being there. I know you were doing golfing and, uh, Cash was, uh, busy doing his, uh, military stuff, so, but, uh, it was a good turnout and, uh, I really appreciate it. But anyway, now, we have a call for a closed session, is that correct? And we will recess, we will recess in the closed session, we'll not be reporting out?
Yeah.
No reporting out. So with that... Closed, city council will meet in closed session pursuant to government code section 54957 dot six for the following conference with legal, labor, Lego, we're going to play Legos. Labor negotiators, negotiator city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, employee organizations, Laverne City Employees Association, Laverne Police Officers Association, Laverne Firefighters Association, Laverne Police and Middle Management Association and all unrepresented employees, and conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And with that, our next regular, regular scheduled meeting is March 6th, Monday, March 6th at 6:30 PM. We are in recess at 9:03. Thank you all. Stay dry, be careful.